Good evening and welcome to the first of the two planning board meetings of the town of Kennebunkport that we have planned for June. It's the 4th of June and we finally have some June-like weather, so it's nice. I'd like to begin by taking attendance. We have all five members in attendance. All good? Did anyone get a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
What'd you think? Move to approve? Second? Five zero. With that, we'll begin with the first item on the agenda, number 250501. It's a continuation of the initial review of 8 Langsford Road.
Hi, my name's Kristi Kenny. I'm KW Architects. I'm here with the owner of 8 Langsford Road, David Betsy's. We have made a slight change to the site plan after last meeting. As you recall, our net, this is a project that was approved for multifamily in 1999. We are requesting a change of the occupancy to add 200 square feet of retail space, remove 200 square feet from our warehouse space. Was a net increase requirement of one parking space. So we have adjusted the parking spaces in the rear of the building, rotated them, and we are presenting them to all be conforming 10-foot by 20-foot spaces.
All four in the rear?
In the rear, yep. We have space for it.
Any other changes you made? Any questions from the board? Mike, you wanted to start?
I thought there was a reduction.
Say again, please.
I think, I was thinking that the net or impervious area was also reduced when I looked at it.
It was reduced slightly, not as much as the previous version, but this version has a slight reduction.
Reduction, yeah, okay.
Fifteen, fifteen square feet.
Yeah.
Okay. Start from the end. Joe, anything? Peter?
I have nothing.
Mike, what else? That's it?
I was the only one.
George?
I appreciate the increasing the size of the existing other ones. Good solution.
No questions? Same with me?
We did, I don't know if you read our staff memo, but we did just want to make the board aware that this is something of a special case. The planning board should not have approved a reduced number of spaces back in 1999. The planning board doesn't have the authority to grant waivers for land use requirements in that way. So it, you know, moving forward, if cases like this come up in the future, there shouldn't, the board doesn't have the authority to grant a reduction in parking spaces, but our attorney advised that since the planning board in 1999 had done so, that the incremental change in this one case was acceptable.
Right, right. Yeah, we discussed that last week as this being a pre-existing condition and, yeah, I think on numerous other occasions, we've said, no, we don't have the right to waive any requirements, but certainly, which is why the new ones had to be in conformance, which they are. Are there any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to find this application complete.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Five oh.
Public hearing in two weeks?
Yes, at the second meeting. That'll be the 18th.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristi. Application continued initial review of 22 New Biddeford Road. Mr. Peterson?
Hello.
Evening.
I'm Eric Peterson from Peterson Design Group. So we have an updated, I guess not amended, but an updated application for 22 and 22R, New Biddeford Road, all packaged into one application.
Yeah.
I think maybe Todd has a lot of the information that you'd like to hear tonight.
Yeah.
As far as the land use, if there are any building questions, I can step forward, but I think he's got the most to say tonight, so I'll let him speak and address the, I think, I don't know if there are any outstanding concerns based on Nadia's latest analysis that she sent out earlier today.
I'm not aware of any.
I don't think there's any new questions and I think we've satisfied pretty much all the questions that were outstanding, but I'll let Todd fly with what he's got. Thank you.
I haven't looked personally at the new package, but it's got the deeds covered and, you know, sort of those.
Yes, we, I sent.
No, no, I know you did. I just was asking you to confirm verbally that.
I did.
When I go look at it, I'm gonna go find the answer to all of the administrative details.
Right, so I sent a new application.
Yeah.
Amended, a new narrative amended, the deed for 22R, the tax card for 22R, and then the revised site plans.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Mechanically, what's going on there is that maybe there's a package in my in-basket that I didn't go get, but I think what's happening is that it's just going into the online database, his new application, or?
I don't think that you have an outstanding paper. So yeah, it's just an online.
Okay, thank you. I'm excusing myself, Seefan, why I haven't looked at. I was trying to figure it out.
I don't know what happened.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
Hi, Todd Richardson from Richardson Associates.
Todd?
Eric on this project. There were two issues that we submitted additional materials for. One was in response to your request for clarification on what's happening on Lot 4B, which is also 22R is the address. And so one of the packets that I hope you haven't had a chance to look at pertains to those uses and if you have that in front of you, that would be great. If not, I brought extra copies if you'd like me to hand those out.
Would you all look at it? Have copies of those?
I saw it on.
Yes, some would. If you have one.
Okay.
That would be swell.
Is this the document that you're referring to? Okay.
Should I still hand it out or?
Yeah, if you've got one.
Okay.
I appreciate your thoughtfulness. Thank you.
Want to see that copy?
Joe asked for one.
No, no.
No, you're good. I'd like. Todd, you have two more takers. Thank you so much. Nice rendering.
So these materials were buried in the big packet that was originally submitted, so we pulled them forward for you to look at. I guess to start with some brass tacks, the spreadsheet includes some of the coverage calculations and I won't go through every number, but it's a pretty detailed chart. It talks about the existing conditions and specifies what is happening within the 75 and without the, outside of the 75, and then the proposed, which is shown in that illustrative plan, and again, what's within the setback and what's outside of the setback.
This is, just to confirm, the same sheet that?
It is the same.
It hasn't changed?
No, it has not.
Okay. Yeah, this is a great sheet.
Yep. And so if you look at that, for those that have the information in front of them, I guess for the highlights here, you can see that the existing coverage is 8.220%, so well under the 20%.
Well, well under.
And then the proposed is 8.86. And then if you look at the proposed, which I know you're interested in, within the 75, it's 0.89% and 7.97 beyond. So hopefully that identifies that we're well, yeah, under the constraints or the thresholds. If you look at the site plan itself, and I brought a copy as well, it's in the packets that I provided, but basically that outlines the things that are changing in that area of the site. So 4B or 22R is in the upper left on the screen here. And what is proposed is access from the parking area over to a walkway that would come up and into the cottage. And there's also a proposed retaining wall that actually is occurring on the adjacent property, but the stairs straddle that. And just to remind folks, the same property owner, is the same person for both properties. So anyway, I wanted to make sure that it was clear that we were well under the percentage of cover agenda.
Agreed.
I'm happy to answer any other specific questions about what is proposed. It's in front of you there. We talked about it at the last meeting as well, but if there's any questions that I could help with, be happy to do that.
George, what about you? Do you have enough to satisfy the?
I do. It was very helpful to add that. I had a question last time and I, unfortunately, my car's in the shop and so is the paperwork. Is there a building height on there?
We're doing no changes to the building.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an existing cottage.
Okay. So nothing in all the work you're doing on?
Yeah, footprint is not.
They added the building height to the application for the main house.
Thank you.
It's just being proposed. But there's no change to this house.
Thank you. And there was, and thank you for the chart. That's a big help. And there's a letter from a butter. One letter about construction noise. Nobody wants to live next to a construction site. I get it. And the other one about the maple.
Yeah, I do have another packet and I did submit this as well, so this is with you already, but I have additional copies.
Can you answer the question about the maple and I'll answer the question about the construction?
That sounds great. Thanks, Eric.
It's called preservation.
That was a correct comment, that there was some feedback from an abutter, actually a relative of the owner of the property regarding the 24-inch maple tree. And it's probably one of the first times that I'm proud to admit that we made a mistake and I'll give you the history. So the work that we presented before located that maple tree triangulating off of existing points on the site. And if you can imagine doing that on a spring day where we were fighting weather, trying to coordinate that, we were off by a few feet. So Lower Village Survey has done a survey of where that existing tree is. And so if you look at the materials, this sheet right here shows the 24-inch maple and the center of that tree is actually right on the edge of the right-of-way, the 15-foot right-of-way. So previously, we were off by a few feet. We thought it was more within the right-of-way and we were being honest with ourselves that if we put the drive in there, it's gonna be literally right next to the tree. It's what we had thought. And so we came originally thinking that we'd have to remove the tree. Lower Village Survey came in and showed us that the tree is not exactly where we had it on our previous plan. My apologies for that, but the good news is that the location, the exact location as identified by the surveyors allows us to preserve the tree. The other thing that we're doing is on this particular sheet here, there's a little construction detail here and we've done some investigation in terms of root protection. So we're running this geotextile fiberglass reinforced matting over the roots for 20 feet so that that will help distribute the load of a vehicle coming across. And then we've narrowed the road slightly and pushed it away from the tree. I think we've got a full six feet away from the trunk of the tree. And then we use the reinforced geotextile material for additional root protection. So good news, we made a mistake, or bad news, we made a mistake maybe, but the tree is not located where we had thought, so we stand corrected that we will be able to preserve that tree. So if there's any questions in regards to the process and where we ended up, I'd be happy to answer those. But hopefully the packet showing the updated survey, the detail of the root protection, and we did put a key plan to begin with that shows the area of the site where we're talking about.
So you're actually, you're saying you are gonna take some measures to make sure the root system is not compressed by the?
Yeah, there's a detail that shows what we're proposing there.
Awesome.
Yeah, when I stood before you saying we had to remove the tree, it wasn't something I was excited about.
Of course.
But it was a reality of the situation and historically, many years ago, when I dealt with actually Brad's dad, when we first started the property, the compound down there, we planted that tree at that time. So at the end of the day, I'm really pleased to say that we're able to save that tree. And just getting a survey work caught up with our field work to prove that we could, so.
Very good.
You're saying that that tree was planted in your lifetime?
Yes, yep.
And it's two feet in diameter?
That's right. See this gray hair?
He was in your lifetime.
It was actually one of the first jobs I've done as a landscape architect, actually, right here in town.
Wow. Thank you.
At age three.
Yeah. I kicked the training wheels and grew up a little bit. Any other needs or questions?
No, Mr. Peterson, you were gonna address the question on how you're handling construction.
Right, there was another.
Concern about?
Note from the abutter that raised a few different concerns and so one of them is timing of the project and I can let you know that we've talked with Brad King about it and he would like to start the project, the demolition part of the project, like at the end of August. So out of consideration for his family members who owned adjacent properties and further adjacent abutters, he is leaving the summer essentially clear that way. So the majority of construction will happen in the fall, in the winter, in the spring, and then hopefully be wrapped up by next summer. So that, I think, addresses the concern of the abutter as far as.
Okay.
Timeframe goes. We put on our drawings as a standard boilerplate spec note that no, I think we talked about this on the Edgewood project too, that no, no vehicles associated with the construction are to be parked in the town right away at any time, so that won't happen. As far as the other concerns, they're really addressed by the town's noise ordinance as far as having music on during the construction or, I mean, some of them I'm just not really gonna talk about. Some of the other things they raised are just not something we're gonna deal with. But, you know, it'll be run as a job site that uses sort of standard construction practices and we'll do everything we can to not irritate a neighbor.
Understood.
Do the best of my ability as far as that stretches.
My understanding is this is not your first or second job in the Goose Rocks area.
That's correct.
So that if someone wanted to pursue your reputation, I think it would be easy enough to find other customers who were?
In the abutters. Listen, I don't wanna make anybody's life unpleasant. There's, that's not part of my mission, so.
It's almost like it's part of staying in business.
It kinda is, yeah, right. It's your part of the fabric of a community.
I'm just saying, if in fact we come next week, two weeks from now and we'll have the public hearing.
Yeah.
I'm hopeful. And the question comes up, that would be one way that you might steer it.
Correct. Correct. I mean, honestly, I personally have no control over what a construction crew does because they're not employed by me, but.
I understand.
I can tell you that most of the builders that I work with also live and work in town.
Yeah.
And want to continue doing so, so they're not gonna behave in a way that would alienate.
Jeopardizes.
No, neighbors. Right.
Okay.
No one enjoys living next to a construction site. On the other hand, construction will take place.
It seems to happen a lot.
Any questions from the board at this point? Start down, left to right, no?
No.
Michael, you're quiet?
No.
All good? George, same here. Got a motion?
I move that we accept this application as complete.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing in two weeks?
Two weeks, we'll see you then.
See you then.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is one of four that look remarkably similar. They're all represented by.
Like a TV panel. Who's telling the truth?
So the first one on the agenda is number 115 Ocean Ave. It's item number 250503, Kennebunk River Club and application is for dredging.
Yes. My name's Lena Toby. I'm here on behalf of Walsh Engineering Associates and then the Kennebunk River Club, as well as the next three projects that we're gonna be covering, which is also the Kennebunkport Marina, the Yachtsman Marina, and the Arundel Yacht Club.
Can I just start?
Yeah.
Two things. First of all, would you tell me your name again?
Yes, my name's Lena Toby.
Lena Toby, thank you.
Yes.
And just so we can be prepared, are there any significant differences in the form or the, that we should be thinking about in advance that we're gonna see different on the next three, or is it four instances of a very similar task?
Four instances of the same task going to be performed by the same contractor. The only difference is how much dredged material we're gonna be taking out of each marina.
And will there be an overall coordination?
Yes.
So that, for example, the barge isn't going to be four separate barges that will take the dredge?
Correct. It's one contractor with a single barge that will be working their way through the four marinas.
Thank you.
Yep.
I apologize for interrupting.
No, you're fine.
I didn't, wanted to know how to listen.
Yes, absolutely. So kind of to that note, it's four projects that are all very similar. I know the first one on the agenda is the Kennebunk River Club. I have a presentation that Nadia pulled up, thank you. And upfront, was just hoping to cover some basic details for all four of the projects and then we'll go bit by bit through the rest of that, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Sounds good.
Great. You can go to the second slide, please. So there are four marinas, as I mentioned. Here's just an aerial image of where they are on, they're all on the Kennebunk River, kind of in order from top to bottom as how you see them, is the Arundel Yacht Club, the Yachtsman Marina, the Kennebunkport Marina, and then the Kennebunk River Club. And you can go to the next one. Thank you. So what we're gonna be doing at each marina is maintenance dredging. So what that means is that we're gonna go in and remove extra sediment that's accumulated at the bottom of the river that's within the navigation channels of each marina. And so the purpose of that is to deepen the ground surface or the sediment level below each marina so that boats can get in and out easily. Right now, we're kind of at a point where this maintenance dredging needs to occur. The boats are hitting ground at low tide and having difficulty moving about the marinas. So we're due for a maintenance dredge. It's been a long time for each of these marinas. And so sort of what the process will look like is that the dredge contractor will go into each marina, they'll remove the docks and the piles, they'll conduct their dredging work, we'll go out and do a bathymetric survey. So on a boat, we'll survey the ground level below each marina, confirm that the dredge contractor removed the sediment they were supposed to remove, got down to the elevation they were supposed to get down to, and then they'll replace the docks and the piles and then move to the next marina from there. Go to the next slide, please. So these are kind of the high-level details of the projects. Like I said earlier, all four marinas contracted with the same contractor. They'll be done in succession, one marina after the other. So for timeline, big picture, we're looking to start in winter. December 1st is our start date. April 30th, 2026, would be our end date. The machine that's gonna be used is a floating barge that has a dredge crane with a clamshell, sorry, clamshell bucket. They're gonna travel upriver from the breakwater to get to each marina and then they'll work the projects one by one. The disposal site for the sediment is gonna be the Isle of Shoals North. It's about 15 nautical miles off the coast of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and about, I think, 23 nautical miles from the Kennebunk River down to the Isle of Shoals disposal site. The permitting process, just really big picture, wanted to give you an overview of what we have gone through for each marina. There's a lot of permitting that's been involved with these dredging projects and it's been pretty complex and it's also changed throughout the process of getting this project, these projects permitted. This all started actually back in 2020 with some soil sampling. So we go in, we sample the sediment at each marina. They do biological and chemical sampling to make sure that the material's not too contaminated, won't impact like shellfish growth, anything like that where they go and dump the sediment down to the Isle of Shoals disposal site. So we started the process with that. That kind of rolled into the first bullet on that list, which is the Army Corps suitability determination. And so what they did is looked at those sampling results, said, yep, you're, the material's clean enough to go to Isle of Shoals, so they approved that disposal site in 2024. From there, we have a couple different buckets of permits. There's Army Corps Section 408 permit, which is for navigation within or adjacent to the federal channel. The Kennebunk River has a federal navigation channel, so we just need to get approval to use that channel to get in and out of the river. There's also Army Corps individual standard permit process, which brings in a lot of other review agencies, DMR, IF&amp;W, EPA. There's a lot of different things that go on through that Army Corps permitting process. In addition to that, we have a DEP individual permit, NERPA permit, that needs to be achieved for the projects. That also constitutes a 401 water quality certification. There's a separate Coastal Zone Management Act review, which is done by the DMR here in Maine. And then there's town permitting. So lots of levels of permitting, kind of where we're at in the whole process is we have the 408 approval from the Army Corps to work within the channel. That gets funneled to the Army Corps. Army Corps is now at a point where they're waiting for the DEP permit. Once we get the DEP permit, we can get the coastal zone permit. And once Army Corps has all of those things, then the Army Corps can finally issue their permit. So it's a lot to take in, but kind of where we're at is we're expecting DEP in June. Hopefully that comes in June. They have been running behind schedule on a lot of projects lately. Once we get Army Corps, or DEP, sorry, it's about a month out from there to get coastal zone. After we get coastal zone, it's about a month or two to get Army Corps. So we're hoping June, July, September at this point, but everything's kind of up in the air and will kind of domino effect if anything gets delayed throughout the process. So the reason that we're here maybe early, seemingly early for the planning board is that we would like to have approval from you guys so that when the Army Corps permit does eventually come in, we're ready to go and we're not here kind of looking out a few meetings to get final approval from the planning board. Which rolls into my next slide, please. Lot of text on here. I'll try to rip through it quickly, but I think, big picture, what we're requesting from the planning board on these projects is that we get project approval prior to receipt of the DEP and Army Corps permits. Again, that's kind of because we just don't know the exact timing and if things get delayed and we get closer to that December start date, we'd like to have the permits from you guys in hand so we can get started and that doesn't delay the process further. We're thinking we're gonna need the full December to April timeframe to get the dredging done at these four marinas. It's about 27, I think 27,000 cubic yards of material we're gonna be dredging, so that takes some time. We're also, on that note, requesting 180-day extension to any approval, just in case we do slide past that December start date, December 1st start date. So we're covered and we don't need to be back here further delaying the process.
Nadia, is that extension something the planning board does or is that the office?
I don't believe so. We don't usually have a strict time limit in that way, especially not within 180 days, certainly. Every so often, we'll see two years, I think, but.
Yeah, I thought, the one I knew was two years.
Mm-hmm. So you should, you should be all set. You shouldn't need a special extension.
Okay, great. All right. And then so for specific waiver requests, just because this is a pretty different project than probably what you guys see on other applications, there were some, there was some information not included in our application just because it's not, not really relevant to these projects. We're not making any changes to any onsite physical features, any parking layouts, stormwater utilities, landscaping, lighting, signage, all that good stuff. This is all, all work that's going to happen within the water. Everything, there will be no on-land component of these projects, so. I can go to the next slide, please. So with that said, I'll start with the Kennebunk River Club and then we can do questions on that. Does that work or on that specific?
Could we, could we just ask a question at this point?
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone, it's okay. So some of us have some questions already.
Sure.
George, you wanna? And again, they're thinking that this is in common with all of them.
Let's take this picture or any of them. You talk about removing pilings, removing docks. Are you removing them and then? are you removing them and then where will they be stored? Or will they be repaired? Or are they replaced? And is this a replacement dock?
Nope. We will be storing the existing docks and pilings. They'll be stored on land. For three of the marinas, Kennebunk River Club, we're still figuring out if they're going to be stored on land or in water at a different marina. We're working through that with the contractor right now. But it will be the same docks and the same pilings going back in.
I had the same, the same question. And so, so there's no change in their configuration?
No.
So, so my question, and Galen and Nadia maybe that... no, what happened?
He had to take a phone call.
I see. Okay. Well, this, this is a question that I need some help with. And I'm wondering, to me, this is a maintenance activity. And I'm questioning why the planning board, what it is we're approving. Right? If you look at when a site plan approval required, I went down through the list and any use listed as a conditional use is subject to planning board's site plan review. Well, okay. This isn't a new use, though. This is, this is existing. But we thought it was a maintenance action. And you're telling me you're not constructing, altering, or externally enlarging any building or structure?
Correct.
No expansion, enlargement, or change of the use?
Correct. It's my understanding that we're here because we're excavating sediment in the intertidal zone. And Galen, now that Galen's back, maybe he can confirm.
My question is like, what exactly are we approving here if this is in fact a maintenance action?
Yeah. So, it's shoreline zoning review. That's what you're looking at as the use for removing the sediment. By way of background, this has been every, what, every 10 years or so?
We've seen them before.
They come in front of the board.
Absolutely.
It's, it's a very standard practice. So, that's, it's more of a formal
All right.
review that we just need to do. But again, we really deferred the state on, on this review process, for sure.
Well, you've heard me say before, I think, I think the planning board provides a great opportunity for the public to see what's going on, get some insight. And the public meeting will be important, at least opportunity. If it's not exercised, that, that's fine, too. But for, for people to, to say what, what's going to be happening in, in my river and what are the expectations. But I, I just thought from the board's point of view, what, what exactly are we looking at?
I was struggling.
That helped. That helped.
And WEA has done a great job doing outreach with the town, as well as the Harbor Master, to make sure that, you know, what they're proposing is not going to be impacting navigation. It's...
Yeah. 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 And again, this wouldn't be the place where we would have a lot of value added for that. Right?
WEA is...
Oh, that's Walsh Engineering.
Oh, come on, George. WEA. Anybody else? Those were the general questions. I apologize.
No, no, you're fine.
Please, please tell me, tell me, tell me more.
All right.
Because this is, this is really interesting stuff.
Yeah. So, this is where we get into the fun part. Okay. So, the first project on, on the list is the Kennebunk River Club. There's a picture of it up there on the slide. That's at 115 Ocean Avenue. So, at this site, we're proposing to dredge about 9,000 cubic yards of sediment. The dredge area is about 50,000 square feet. On every site, we're going to be dredging down to elevation six, mean low water. And there's about one foot of overdig anticipated. Just, it's hard to get really precise with the equipment that they use. So...
Tell us what that word means, overdig?
Overdig. It just means that we might end up going down to elevation seven in some situations.
So, not, not to exceed seven foot?
Exactly. Yes. We will be between six and seven feet.
What does elevation seven mean? Seven feet below sea level, seven feet below, I mean, what, you know?
Yeah. So, this is on the mean low water datum.
That makes it so much more clearer.
I'm not a datum person.
Explain it like a six-year-old to me, because I'm like a six-year-old.
Low tide, they'll have six feet of clearance.
Yeah. From the mean low, yeah, the water line.
Or seven, maybe?
On average.
Or maybe seven. Yes.
On average.
On average. But the really low knee tide, it might get five feet.
And that's according to standards that are written in a big book somewhere by smart people.
Yeah. The Army Corps has this work out of this. If you go to the next slide, we just have, this is what the dredge plan looks like. It's kind of hard to see up on the screen, a little bit blurry. But basically, the colors show what the existing elevations of sediment are. And then we'll be bringing all of that down to one single elevation, that minus six to minus seven. But the, the colors just kind of show how much material in feet we're removing from each area. And then you can go to the next slide. This is also not, maybe not super clear. But this is just showing the, the profile of the dredge, a section through it. But basically showing, everything goes up and down. Right now, it's going to be a flat bottom dredge down to six, six to seven when we're done. That's all I've got for the Kennebunk River Club.
Can you just give us a thought as to where's, where's the dredge, where's the boat sit? That the material is being loaded onto and how is it getting moved?
The barge.
The barge. Where's the barge sit? And how does the material get from the ground where it is today to, to the barge?
Yeah. So, the barge is just going to sit where the docks and the pilings are now. They're going to be sitting in the marinas. And it's going to be two separate barges. There's going to be a crane barge, and then there'll be what they call a scowl. So, on the crane barge, you'll have a crane with a clamshell bucket. They'll lower the clamshell bucket into the sediment. They'll pick it up. They'll move it with the crane and drop it into the scowl, which is just a big, flat barge with like a big belly in it. So, they'll fill up the scowl, and when the scowl's full, they'll bring it out to Isle of Shoals. And then there's, they have like doors in the bottom that flap open, and they'll drop the sediment at Isle of Shoals.
And then you're, you're shut down until the scowl comes back?
Yes.
Okay.
We have another scowl.
Unless they have a second scowl. Yeah, we're still working through those details with them.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
I, I can make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, that we just go right through all four because if we take them one by each, we're going to get the same story again.
Everybody feel the same way?
I agree with that.
Any downside in that, gentlemen?
Was there one comment that was different than the other ones?
The, that comment's been resolved. There was a map blocking lot error. That was it.
Okay.
So, that's fine.
What do you think about that?
That sounds great to me. Yeah.
Let's do that.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
So, this is kind of a 10-year cycle on, on these?
Five to 10, it depends. Yeah.
And, and these four property owners all got together, but there's some in between, there's some on the other ends. Does that make it less efficient? I mean, shouldn't this all be done at once?
Um, it sort of depends. I mean, it takes a group of people coming together to organize all of this. And so, it is definitely a lot. And I think different marinas are on different dredge cycles at this point. So, it just so happened that these four got together, happened to be pretty much on the same cycle. So, it worked out that way. But yeah, I mean, it certainly would be great to just hit the whole river at once, but...
Get a good rate on a scowl that way.
But also don't have, you don't have spread out from, from others that are higher now. Well, you're lower.
Right. Right.
We had a dredge that was the non-antim, wasn't it, a number of years ago?
I'm trying to remember. I thought it was more than one even, that it was some coordination. It wasn't these four, but yeah. This, this sounds familiar.
Going through the other three?
No, no. I, I think that's, that's a great idea.
Correct me if, if I'm wrong, but also you have a very short window that you can do your dredging, too. So, that's probably also why they're not all at the same time.
Yeah. The regulations have shrunk that, continuing to shrink that window down. But right now, we're limited to December 1st through April 30th.
Okay. Is there any capacity issue at Isle of Shoals at this point that is of concern to you?
Not that I know of. No. The Army Corps hasn't brought anything up. Awesome. So, rolling into the next one. The Kennebunk Port Marina is at 67 Ocean Avenue. They're proposing to dredge about 3,700 cubic yards of sediment. It's about a 37,000-square-foot dredge area. And same as the other one, we're dredging down to minus six with a foot of overdig.
As you're going through these, which was the one where you were stacking docks on land?
That, for all, all but the Kennebunk River Club. And then that one, we're still figuring out if those will be on land or on water.
And will it be stored on, is it one, will it be stored on the asphalt circus, surface or on the ground? I'm just curious.
Um, I don't know if that's been coordinated yet.
Okay.
Yeah. And then here's the dredging plan for the Kennebunk Port Marina. Again, just lots of colors showing different areas where they currently sit in elevation, and they'll all be brought down to minus six. Let me go to the next one, Nadia. Here's the section for the Kennebunk Port Marina. Next, please. We'll just roll through these. The Yachtsman Marina is next on the list. That's at 57 Ocean Avenue, proposing to dredge about 6,400 cubic yards of sediment from this marina. And it's got a 61,000-square-foot area. Same as all the other ones, we're going to be dredging down to minus six with a foot of overdig. Here's the plan, and then here's kind of the cross-section. And then lastly is the Arundel Yacht Club at 51 Ocean Avenue. That's going to be 8,000 cubic yards of sediment and then about a 46,000-square-foot dredge area, which we can see on the next plan here, and then some cross-sections at the very end. That's all I've got for you guys.
Just, just to follow up in the start of, we're doing them all in a row. I'd like to just read into the record that these are all individual items on tonight's agenda. I'll just tell you for the record that the first one, as I read, was 115 Ocean Ave, 250503, item number, and then item number 252504, 67 Ocean Ave, 250505, 57 Ocean Ave, and 250506, 51 Ocean Ave. And, and guys, I think our plan should be that we will produce four separate findings of fact to go with the four different applications. But I'd, I'd volunteer to, to take in, and probably they will look very similar and reference each other, that this is a coordinated activity, if that, again, is acceptable as, as far as you guys can see. Yeah. We'll probably be more likely to get them right that way, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
Watch the cut and paste.
Carefully. Okay. Questions?
How much does a clamshell load bring up? How many cubic yards? How big's that clamshell?
That's a great question. Do any of you guys know that answer? How many cubic yards the clamshell pulls up?
With a full load?
How big is, how big is the bucket?
I would bet it's how we, three yards, I guess.
Yeah, at least, probably. Yeah.
It's a big bucket.
It's a big bucket. Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah.
For the record, for those not here, it was about three yards. Thanks.
Any other questions? Joe, Peter?
No.
Michael?
I'm good.
No questions here?
Just curious.
Yes?
How does it get there? Just, this is from the tide, water flowing from the lake.
Yeah. Yes. The tide brings sediment in, and then also erosion comes downstream from the river during like large storm events, flood events.
Twice a day.
When you take the sediment down from point A, what keeps the rest of the sediment from point B through C that you didn't dredge from just flowing right back in there?
There's some of it.
Certainly.
If it slumps down in when you dig up.
I'm just curious. I mean, I'm not, you know...
Yeah.
I think it takes about 10 years.
That sounds like five to 10.
Yeah. It takes a lot of force to move sediment, especially like those particles that get really heavy when they're wet. So, it does take a good amount of movement, like a bigger tide or a bigger storm coming down.
Imagine the winter storms of two Januaries ago.
Yes.
So, and the amount of rain that came down, and the amount of river, you know, water. You've, you've stood on Indock Square and looked at the water, that the torrent of water that comes down that river.
Stayed in my basement, saw a torrent of water.
Oh, there you go. All right. So, yeah, there's job security, I guess. This is, it's, it's going to happen again.
Definitely. Yeah.
Cost of doing business. Anything else? Do you have a motion?
I have a motion that we find this applications...
These four applications?
Four applications complete.
Second, that motion.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All four.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Public hearing in two weeks.
That sounds good. All right.
That's right, on the 18th.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody. Any other business this evening?
Parking, parking lots to boat lots, you know?
Can I, can I just quickly, and I, I don't want to belabor this. I, I was up early this morning. I spent the day out on Wells Reserve with a bunch of fifth graders. Then I came here, so I'm tired. But I wanted to ask, Nadia, you, you said last week you might be able to have a conversation with some of the staff about somehow making the, the list of required submission elements a part of the application, a more complete part of the application. Like, right now, if I find one of the applications, I think the deed is listed as, you gotta, you gotta have a list of a butters. There's a subset of the larger list that's in Section 10. And the talk was, could we just take Section 10 and make it, replace that section of the application with a checklist that said, hey, here's what's required. You can request a waiver, or you can make a comment, or... So that we're not looking in two different places. Here's the list from the Land Use Ordinance, and here's the, the list of six or seven items. It would make our life easier, and I think it might make the, the applicant's life easier.
And the first applicant who was in this evening, Great Lakesford Road, when she was before the board a year ago, things didn't feel as organized. And she came back with a checklist, and this time automatically did a checklist and was very, very helpful. We standardized that and related that also, as we discussed last meeting, to the findings of fact, which maybe we should look at how we're wording that and filling that out.
Yeah, that's my responsibility.
Yeah. We want to, we, we want to leverage that then and embody it in the...
The moment they look like they've been done by committee a long time ago and no one's done any updates.
Well, and they, you know, it's pretty close to the fact. This, let me see if I can find an example. We don't do anything else, but here's, here's the list that Eight Lakeswood Road has put. And all right, it's a little, you know, number-y. And probably a checklist wouldn't carry all the numbers, or it wouldn't be the first one. There'd be a check block. But these are the items that are lifted directly from Section 10, Submission Requirements. If you look at the filing requirements checklist, one, two, three, four, only five items are listed as like the most important ones. I'm, I'm wondering, now that we've gotten ourselves updated and smart about, oh, there's really a list of a dozen or 15, why have two separate lists? Could we make one and do it in a form that just causes the eye of the applicant to go down through it and say either yea or nay explicitly?
Yeah. And have a, a check there, are they requesting a waiver?
Yeah, a comment field or...
Either something, and then it just flows.
It's in their best interest as well, because it'll get them through the process that much faster.
Anyway, I'm not looking for a solution tonight, but only a request. Let's look at this and...
And, and we've been kind of talking in the office the past Yeah. few weeks. We have some other planning board application improvements that we've been, been looking at. So, I think we certainly can roll them all into one. A revamped planning board application, very shiny, very beautiful. Talk of the town in a couple of weeks.
The other towns have been agreeing with that.
There you go.
If you...
I mean, go through it line by line.
If you thought, I was going to say, if you thought it would be helpful, I know you'd have some people on the board, and we could even do it as another action, or we could do it offline, give, give you informal feedback and say, yeah, this looks great. It'd be something that, if it's helpful.
I think we would probably post it up on the SharePoint and hope to have, you know, if conversation, have a shorter
Yeah.
discussion regarding the application.
Yeah. Not, not like, not like our buy-loss, but yeah.
Does the state have a template of some sort?
No.
Or does anybody know how this form came out? It really has this proliktopsy, hasn't it?
Yeah.
All right.
Which is... We, we, every town has their own separate applications.
And it seems like too much work to go change it.
No. This is, this, this...
But what a great idea.
I think it's an opportunity.
Yeah, why? We can improve it.
I think you've already improved it some, and I think, I think...
Oh, you have absolutely. The summary document's been wizard.
Well, you started with your planning board members, even the ones who have been here five years, saying,[1750.08]